We're just about a minute away from starting. Before we begin, I'd invite you to stand, join me in the pledge, and then I'll bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic voted for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity you give us to live in this great city. We thank you for this state and this country. God, we thank you for the lives that you give us to live. And God, thank you for each one in this room, whether on the council or city staff or whether a resident that's here for some reason. God, I thank you for the opportunities you give for us to make a positive difference in the lives of others. Father, we ask that that's what happens tonight, that you just help us and guide us so that we make decisions that are best for our city and the people of our city. And we trust you for these things now in Jesus' name. Amen. I'd like to again welcome you to tonight. This is a regular meeting at Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, March 27, 2018. We'll begin things by asking our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Rick Culver.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Colby Fulfer.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rick Evans.
Kathy J. Cox.
Here.
Urskate.
Here.
All right, thank you. We do have large print agenda. Bill, do you have some over there? Large print agendas available if that would be helpful to anyone. I'm gonna, we'll go ahead and move on to item four in the agenda. That's comments from our citizens. If we have any citizens that would like to address the council, you're welcome to come forward. If you have some comments you'd like to make and address the council, we just ask that you keep your comments brief. And please know that the council won't take action on anything you have to say tonight. So if there's anyone that would like to address the council, you're welcome to come at this time to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and again, please keep your comments brief. Yes?
Well, good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. And so thankful to be here. My name is Marcus Carruthers. My address is 390 Reed Bridge in Fayetteville, Arkansas. The reason that I'm here today, I'm so thankful to just have the opportunity to have an impact inside of Springdale. Been very active in serving the community and serving the students in Springdale and helping students that were most at risk. We actually go to the Juvenile Detention Center and just serve in a number of different ways. We do a Unity Fest every summer, and I'm just so thankful to be a part of Springdale. We came, my wife and I, we came to northwest Arkansas in 1995. Tyson Foods brought us here. I was a computer analyst at Tyson's. And where we are today is so much further than what I can even imagine. So I'm very thankful to be a part of the northwest Arkansas community. The reason that I wanted to come today is I'd love for the council to just consider renaming a street Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue. One of the things that we've studied across the United States is that cities that actually have a Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, those are cities that are innovative, that are doing great innovative things, receiving grants. And I'd love for the city just to consider that. It's been amazing just how far we've come with the leadership that we have in place with Mayor Sprouse and with you all's leadership. I think Springdale is an incredible place. It's a great place to live, it's a great place to play, and it's a great place to work. So that's why I'm here. So I'd love to talk more about that at some point, but if you all would just consider that, that would be an extraordinary, awesome, I think, blessing to northwest Arkansas. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. And thank you for what you know, if Marcus was one that stepped up when we were having some, when we had some tragic incidents with our youth a few years ago. And Marcus, you and others have been very helpful, and I want to thank you for that, for your engagement in that. Okay, anyone else like to address the council? All right, we'll move on to item five, and we have a presentation by Helen Tyson Middle School and Springdale High School East Programs. Welcome, you all. Please, before you start, give us your names so we'll have you on TV, all right?
My name is Jean Gillespie.
My name is Angie Kirkamo.
I'm Bailey Jones, and I am the East Facilitator at Springdale High School.
And I'm Brittany Berry, and I'm the East Facilitator at Helen Tyson.
Right. What are y'all gonna do for us tonight?
Okay, so we got this idea with our kids, when was it, like, it was several months ago, sometime last semester, and, well, actually, it was a summer seminar. And we got this idea for parking signs because you see like Purple Heart parking signs and specific military veteran signs. And we thought, why isn't there just a general veteran sign? So Springdale High and Helen Tyson worked together to create a design for a sign so that there could be veteran parking at any business that would like to have a parking space to show their support for veterans. And so, as you all know, signs cost money, materials cost money, so we started looking out in the community. And the Wisers from JV Manufacturing, they're very generous, and they donated $1,500 for us to purchase materials to create these signs. Well, I was talking to Mr. Reed a couple weeks ago, and he, I showed him one of the signs because we were talking about another project, and he asked me if he could bring them and see if the city would like some, and I was like, sure. So then he brought me back four signs that the city said, hey, if you'll just put stickers on them, you don't have to use your own stuff for these things. And so that's what we have for you tonight. And Ms. Berry can tell you a little bit more about the project because it's more than just putting up the signs. So I'll move on.
Good.
So a lot of the work we do with the kids, especially in terms of the community, is we look at different types of livability indexes and get the kids starting to look at data and information and understand kind of the needs and the demographics of our community. One of the things they were particularly surprised at was the number of veterans that are in northwest Arkansas. Per capita number, we are relatively high, and the students wanted to do something to honor, recognize, and to put our name out there as a community that's increasingly becoming a great place for veterans to be, to exist and to live. And I know Mr. Reed and several organizations are looking at ways to continue that development. We're excited to participate in it. But in order to work on this project, the students began by looking at demographics, using census data to map where the largest percentages and concentrations of veterans were in northwest Arkansas. They specifically targeted businesses within areas that are within a two to three mile driving radius of large concentrations of veterans, so we had them be data-driven. They got to work with professional-grade design software to create the designs. We went to the museum. They learned how to cut road stencils and all sorts of stuff, so it's been a really exciting process. I'm gonna let the girls talk just real briefly kind of about what they've learned and why they particularly were interested in this project.
Great.
So what I've learned about this project is like how many veterans we have, because we have like a lot, and I didn't know how many we had. I've also learned how to like use the ArcGIS website and how to like map out like businesses and where the veterans live.
All right.
So I enjoyed this project because we got to send out emails to a bunch of businesses promoting our signs and asking for them to host spots so that they either had like an option for like a stencil or like a parking space. We learned through, we went through the museum and we got to experience how it was made, and it was like a really nice experience.
These are the signs we have for you.
Okay. Well, thank you.
But we want them, but we have.
All right, well, we will, thank you for, how many, how many students are involved besides you two in this program?
Yeah, I'd say like, like four to six.
Okay.
Probably, but several students help out in like smaller ways, maybe, you know, we need them to collect some data that, you know, just is kind of busy work. But in general, there's like four to six students that are like really working on this project.
And along the way, like the girls are almost done, they kind of stumbled upon a lot of information that we just stumbled upon about different veteran organizations, veteran-owned businesses, veteran resource services in northwest Arkansas. And they were particularly surprised about how unconcentrated that information is, and so they have almost completed a digital online story map with about 30 to 40 resources that they're gonna be able to share out to try to concentrate that information, make it easier for people to find it. So it's kind of building.
Yeah, it's just kinda like you start doing stuff and then you realize, oh, here's another path that we can take from this project, so.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you very much. I think they deserve a big hand. That's a great project that will, yeah, absolutely. We will find places for those signs, and, that's super. Thank you all very much. Okay. Looky there, we've already got one spoken for. Thank you all again. That's great. Appreciate it.
Mayor, I want to say that these labs are helping us, first of all, with our Springdale Memorial Organization, and also that because of these signs, they have found out that the place we get the signed blanks and stuff are a lot cheaper and better signed blanks, and so they're gonna be able to go there and get them also.
Right. Jim contacted me, and we've talked with Sam, and Public Works got these, our sign shop.
Can I ask a question? For those that are watching, if there are other businesses or individuals that would like these signs, are they available if you contact the mayor's office or the schools or how would someone that?
How's the best contact if someone wants a sign?
Would you like to take the microphone?
Come right on, I'm sorry. Yeah, come on back up here.
So the girls have a flyer explaining kind of what the options are. The easiest way would probably to contact, I guess, myself, and so my school email is B-B-E-R-R-Y at Estelle.org, so B Berry at Estelle.org, and I can forward you all of the girls' information. Right now, I believe we have 16 signs available that would come at no expense other than the installation cost. And so the sign, the post, or the parking stencil is still available free thanks to that partnership with JV Manufacturing. So currently, there are, I guess, six that have already been spoken for, and so I think there's about 16 that we're still looking to find home for.
Okay. If, once you're out of what you've.
Our plan is if there is a growing interest, and we really hope that as they, as people see them in the community, then they'll kind of have like a butterfly effect, is that we would continue to make them solely at the cost, which is for the metal signs, not including the post, about $11.
Okay. Great. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for having us.
I'll take one of those and take it to the rodeo grounds.
There we go.
I'll get it afterwards.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
We need to save one for City Hall.
It's a good idea.
All right. We will move on to item six. Is there anyone else? Okay. Okay, item six, approval of minutes. If there are no changes or additions, that entertaining motion.
These from October?
Do what?
Today. I'm good.
Do we have a motion?
If none, so moved.
All right.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item seven, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, Council?
Move for A and B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second for options A and B. Roll call, please.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Carry six, zero.
Okay. Item eight, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations. Patsy Christie, Director of Planning. Patsy?
The first item on the agenda is a request for a conditional use for Hill de Serrano, and the resolution doesn't have an address on it. It should be 2826 Granny Smith. The request is for a use unit 28, which is a home occupation in SF2 zone for the operation as a seamstress and alterations. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval of the resoning request with the following conditions: No alteration of the outside appearance of the residential structure, provision of a separate outside entrance for the business areas of the residential structure, no outside storage or materials required for the operation of the business operated only by the resident members of the household and shall not have any employees, concessionaires, or any other form of operator or helper whether such business is conducted on the premises or off the premises, requires the use of an area no greater than 30% of the total heated living space of the residential structure, generates no traffic, parking, and sewage or water use in excess of what is normal in the residential neighborhood, will not produce any fumes, odors, noise, or any other offensive effects that are not normal to residential activity, will not involve accessory buildings, and stock and trade should not exceed 10% of the floor area of the accessory use. As I said, Planning Commission recommends approval of this. The title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Approving a Conditional Use for Hill de Serrano at 2826 Granny Smith," as set forth in ordinance number 4030.
Will the resolution pass?
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Do we have anybody in the audience that needs to address this? All right, Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
The next item is a rezoning request for 2.7 acres owned by Bob Bonds, and it's actually located at 8332 East Wagon Wheel Road, yeah, East Wagon Wheel Road. It says 6520 on the agenda and in the ordinance. Planning Commission reviewed this request. It is to rezone the property from A1 to R2, which is residential estate lots. Planning Commission recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307," the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to Residential Estate RE and declaring an emergency.
Will the ordinance pass?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance, the rezoning. Any other questions or comments? Anybody in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Will the emergency clause pass?
Second.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Will the ordinance emergency clause carry six, zero? The next item is a request to rezone .61 acres owned by Northlake Storage LLC located at 3924 South Old Missouri Road from Neighborhood Office District 01 to General Commercial District C2. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307," the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by certain lands, okay, we got a mistake in here, by rezoning certain lands from Neighborhood Office District 01 to General Commercial District C2 and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance pass.
Second. Okay, further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Will the ordinance emergency clause carry six, zero? The next item is a request to rezone 2.56 acres owned by Robin and Terry Pierce located at 2409 Reed Avenue. The request is to rezone from Agricultural District A1 to low-medium-density single-family residential district SF2. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. Title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307," the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, excuse me, by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to low-medium-density single-family residential district SF2 and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Okay, any further questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Will the emergency clause pass?
Second.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Will the ordinance emergency clause carry six, zero? And I forgot to mention that these all come with emergency clauses because we do have pending developments and/or sales of property for each of these rezoning requests. In the last two days, about wore my voice out, that was not too good last week, anyway. The next request is for 32 acres owned by Kelly E. Clark and Christie A. Clark. This property has a parcel number in the rezoning request because it doesn't have an address, but it's on Cooper Lane, and you can see the track up there on the, on the screen. We don't have any way to identify it with an address because one hasn't been identified yet. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval of the rezoning request. Title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307," the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to high-density multifamily residential district MF24 and declaring an emergency. Move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Okay, any further questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Will the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Will the ordinance emergency clause carry six, zero? The next item is a request to rezone 10 acres owned by Nathan Fritzian or Neo Cabinets located at 2293 East M Avenue. Their request is to rezone the property from Agricultural District A1 to General Commercial District C2. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307," the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to General Commercial District C2 and declaring an emergency.
The ordinance pass.
Second.
Is that the old Jeff Brown place?
I don't think so. It's further on to the, in the Jeff Brown property, the one that was next door to the, to the auction?
No.
Okay, I don't know that it was.
This piece of property came to us about making something else, didn't here a while back.
We had one, you know, that there's duplexes going on the two lots next to it, that we did some variances for that. I don't know that we've had this one before.
We had one further down.
Yeah. There's property further on to the, to the east that's been rezoned as well, but I don't think we've had this piece of property before. And I think the Jeff Brown property is the one right next to the livestock auction. But I don't know that for a fact. That's what I remember.
It belongs to Pat Henry now.
I'm sorry?
That one beside the cell barns, Pat Henry.
Well, Pat Henry.
Yeah, now.
Isn't that the same piece? Yeah. Yeah, that's the same piece. Yeah, that's the same piece.
I thought it was second.
No, I think it's the one right adjacent to it, yes.
So how does this fit into the land use plan?
The land use plan shows commercial development through this area. Those apartment complexes went in when apartments were allowed as, in a C2 zone. That's how all that got in there. Now, we don't allow apartments in a C2 zone anymore, so they're non-conforming uses, but that's how they got in there.
So we used to have maps that showed the zoning of surrounding properties. We don't have anything like that anymore?
Well, we gave you the ones to show that the signs have been posted because we had questions before about whether or not the signs were being posted. Do you want it all put on one map? I mean, we have one that shows that what the adjacent rezoning is, but this was done specifically so that if there was ever a question, that the signs were posted on the piece of property when they were supposed to be, because we've had questions.
That's what the little S is?
Yes, that's to show you.
That's just to show that there was a sign.
Right, and the date. You'll see who posted it and the date, so we know when it was posted. Now, signs don't always stay there like they're supposed to, but we verify that it was done if there's any question of whether notification was given in accordance with the ordinance.
I think for our purposes, it'd be better to see the surrounding properties. I mean, I know that I'm one of the worst ones to ask about signs, but.
Okay.
They're always creating impediments.
Well, you guys have trusted me before, but you also wanted to see when it was done, so we gave you this. So we'll try to put both of it on one map.
And he always wants to see the street address, too. He doesn't know where property is.
Okay, I'll make a note. We'll try to either do the two map, maps that we do, or we'll put it all on one. Sometimes it gets a little confusing, but we'll see if we can't come up with something for you.
What was the vote again?
Had to vote it, yeah.
No, I'm in. The Planning Commission?
Planning Commission recommends approval.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Will the ordinance emergency clause carry six, zero?
Okay, the next request is to rezone .8 acres owned by Dorman Buildings Incorporated located at 1471 West Sunset. The map is a little bit deceiving because right now, this piece of property is all in parcel, and it's being split off so that the parcel to the east of the yellow building out there is being rezoned, and a small piece of it in the back. We have a clear legal description, and that's what in the ordinance, but didn't get cleared up on the map. This is the location that we have a large-scale development plan for Dairy Queen, in case anybody's interested. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval of the rezoning. The title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordnance Amending Ordinance Number Thirty-three oh seven," the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springville, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, "by rezoning certain lands from General Commercial District C-two to Thorfell Commercial District C-five and declaring an emergency."
Pass.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Further questions?
So, so you're saying this picture is not what's being rezoned?
Right. What's actually being zoned is the lot that Dr. Dorman's old office used to be and a small piece of that track on the back is being added to it, but the lot split hasn't been completed, so it came in as one.
Grocery store, yellow grocery store, is that nine oh one?
Right. It never was part of it, and it's left out of this. It's just-
You can see the old slab on the, on the picture.
Now, since you pointed out where the sign location is, signs on the, on this big-
That's true, because it's a big track, so it, it was deceiving with the legal description we got at the beginning. We've kind of narrowed it down based on the lot split that got approved. It could be, it could be approved at the staff level because it's never been split before. So, the two didn't jive at the same time like they should have. I know. I make a big deal about the sign, and then I know it's not in the exact right place.
Not the right spot.
And no good deed goes unpunished. I know how that works. It gets to me every time, yeah. Just tells you we're all human.
Don't screw up our Dairy Queen here.
No, no. We haven't screwed up the Dairy Queen. It's gonna be there. We're getting, we're moving right along with that. We'll get all this detail, and we didn't catch it till late this afternoon and didn't, quite honestly, did not have time to get that changed. And that will be my plea. You know, I really need another person, because there's a lot of stuff going on. So I'll just toss that out there.
We'll amend your budget and add whatever.
Oh, well, yeah, okay. Let me, let me give you my number, okay?
No problem.
Yeah, okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any, any comments from the audience? All right, Denise?
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Will the emergency clause pass?
Second. Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries six zero.
The last item is a request for a waiver of sidewalk construction in connection with a single-family home owned by B.J.M. Rentals to be built at eleven thirty-one Northwest End Street. Planning Commission recommends approval of the waiver of this request. The title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Approving a Waiver of the Street Improvements, Drainage, Curbs, Gutters, and Sidewalks Set forth in Ordinance Number Thirty-seven twenty-five to B.J.M. Rentals LLC in connection with eleven thirty-one Northwest End Street, a single-family dwelling."
Are there, are there no sidewalks on West End?
No. They're not.
We discussed that before.
We discussed that at the and, and right now, there's not any projects that are in, on any of the capital lists to do anything to West End. We discussed payment in lieu of improvements, and they asked for the waiver to be taken a vote on, and, yeah.
Will the resolution pass with option one?
Second.
Did we get a second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions?
Why is this coming to us again? That they're building on this lot?
They're building a single-family dwelling on there, yes.
And they don't want to put sidewalks down or improve the street?
Well, they're not required to improve the streets when they build a single-family dwelling, but they are required to do the sidewalk, and really, all we're waiving is the sidewalk improvement on this lot when a single-family house is being built there.
And this kind of similar to Larry Gibson's rental properties that he got so upset about?
There are some places, yes.
So why would we not put sidewalks there because there's no sidewalks down the street?
No long-range plans for putting any in for a while, either.
Well, I, I can tell you, staff's recommendation is never to waive them if, if, you know, it's not a good time to build the sidewalk at that location. We take payment in lieu of, uh, planning commission.
I mean, we'd like to have sidewalks there.
Yeah, mhm.
That's why the payment in lieu of is sometimes a good idea, because it's not-
Put that in the motion.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, that's part of the discussion we've had for years is because payment in lieu would pay for some of these sidewalks.
I guess I'm, what I'm curious is why we would treat this different from the way we treated Larry Gibson on Highland.
I can't answer that question for you.
There's no logical reason sometimes, I think.
People didn't like him.
Well, we have a motion and a second to waive it.
Are these people here?
Anyone here on this property?
Well, if they're represented by ESI, we can't grant it.
Jason Apple with ESI. Yeah, we just requested the waiver. I mean, the majority of West End looks built out, and so that was our, kind of our argument that, you know, once the city comes in and if they do improve West End, that street infrastructure sidewalks will be built at that time.
Really, there, there wouldn't have to be any street infrastructure, though, would there? If the waiver wasn't granted? It's primarily sidewalks we're talking about.
The waiver was only for sidewalk, yes sir.
There's no curb or gutter on that street, so there's no way of knowing where the sidewalk would need to be. They could put it in and then, and then, when, when, and if we do have a street widening or a street improvement program, it's gonna come out. I mean, another way of doing it is also, is a bill of assurance which follows the property.
But then that expires after some length of time.
Doesn't have to, but, anyway, the-
Historically.
Right now, I do, I will say, there's a motion and I made it to pass it with option one, so.
Any other comments? All right, we're voting on the motion that is on the table. Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Six zero.
All right, thank you. Item nine, ordinance committee reports and recommendations. Chairman Mike Overton. Mike?
Once again, Mayor, the ordinance committee did not have the pleasure of my enlightened leadership, so I'll turn it over to whoever tried to fill my shoes.
All right. Jeff, did you do that?
I think I did, and we discussed this ordinance. The ordinance title reads, "An Ordnance Amending Chapter forty-six dash fifty-six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Springville, Arkansas, to declare an emergency and for other purposes." This basically changes our date of fireworks exhibits, I guess, to basically follow the state law. Isn't that basically what it was?
Has to fall seven days with, by state law, I think?
The makeup dates would be, would fall within the, what the state is.
Commercial.
Yeah.
Commercial exhibits.
Right.
Anyway, the ordinance committee did consider this and recommended to forward it to the council with recommendation for approval.
Motion, we pass?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anyone else need to speak to this?
Could you, because I went online to try and find out what the state rules are. This seems very vague, the new portion we're adding, so can you be very specific about what we are proposing this city?
The, the, the state permit for a professional outdoor fireworks display provides for a rain-out date to be within seven days of the date that they've applied to actually do the fireworks show. Our ordinance says you can only do the show between the first and the fourth, and it would not allow for a makeup day, a rain-out date. We had this happen last year, rain on the fourth, third and fourth. I think if somebody wanted, had a professional display, they wanted to do on the fifth, which was the rain-out date specified on their state permit, but our ordinance would not allow that because it was limited to the first through the fourth. So this would only allow them to avail themselves of the rain-out date that's put on their state permit, which has to be within seven days of their original date.
So, could it be on July eleventh, then?
If their, if their original permit was for the fourth, if they specified, they have to, my understanding is they have to specify the date on the front end. If they specified the eleventh, then yes, but I don't know if they would specify it that way.
Again, I'm just, I'm, I live in this city, too. I know how people feel about fireworks. I know what we've all lived with. I know the conversations. I understand the professional part because there's some real cost involved in that. But the number of complaints we get about the fireworks, and I know this is personal versus professional, where it's everywhere, it's at all hours of the day and night, it's on weeknights. That was a discussion that we had.
I see what you're saying is that you're getting so far away from the Fourth of July, it isn't really making sense, but it seems to me like the only reason they would ever designate seven days away would be if, say, the Fourth of July was on a Saturday, and they might want it to be on a Saturday again.
I understand, again, I understand the purpose of this. I just, I just know that how very unpopular some areas of the city feel about fireworks.
Right.
So, to expose them to an additional seven days.
Well, this isn't everybody shooting them either.
That's why I said it.
Like we get most of our comments and complaints about.
Prefaces by saying professional.
That's another, really another issue.
I understand, really, Rick, I do understand, but I understand that there are people that are-
So you want to do something different?
I, I haven't, I'm sorry, I've been out of pocket for about three weeks, so.
He was asking for clarification.
That's all I'm asking.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? Anyone in the audience on this? Okay, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
No.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carries five one. It does have an emergency clause because I, the reason I put the emergency clause in there is I know they have to apply for these permits with the state, so we'd like to get this put into effect sooner.
Move the emergency clause pass?
Second.
Second.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Emergency clause carries six zero. Thank you, Ms. Jay Cox.
All right. Thank you. Item ten is Health Sanitation and Property Maintenance Committee Reports and Recommendations, and Chairman is Jim Reed. Jim?
This first ordinance is ordering the raising, demolition, and removal of certain residential structure of the city of Springville, Arkansas, located at five seventeen Mountain View Avenue to declare emergency and for other purposes. The committee did recommend approval. Tom's here to talk to us about it.
Good evening, council and mayor. This is the one we talked about at five seventeen Mountain View. Unfortunately, this is a person owned by, it's a property owned by a deceased woman. We have dealt with it, I've dealt with it since fourteen, as far as going for condemnation on it. Ernest's office has tried to contact anybody who would be relative, heir, state, and to no avail. So we're at the point now where this house is unsecure, falling on itself, and that's why I'm asking for this for to be raised and removed.
I'm gonna make a motion the ordinance pass.
And I would second that.
And just, and just so we can do it, because Mr. Watson had asked about it to their day, there is a little storage building on this that is totally unsecured, and I want to make sure that that's understood, that I'm taking everything on this property would go during this raise and removal, so.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Anybody need to speak to this? Kay Denise?
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Emergency clause pass?
Second. Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries six zero.
And the next one is ordinance ordering raising, demolition, and removal of certain residential structure within the city of Springville, Arkansas, located at two fifteen West Maple Avenue to declare emergency for other purposes. This was tabled from February thirteenth and February twenty-seventh. I will tell you that before the meeting, I was able to see some drawings from their architect of what they plan on doing. It's my understanding that this property is in their name now. Is that, do you know that?
I received an email yesterday from Mr. McCready, who's here, the attorney for the family, provided me with all those drawings, and those were supposed to be placed in the drop box, but I don't see that they were. So I apologize for that, but yes, I think Mr. McCready may want to address.
And it is in their name, Mr. Reed. It was like the twenty-eighth of February, I believe. Does that sound right, Mike? It was like the twenty-eighth, it did actually go into their name.
And I walked the property today, and they made substantial progress for cleaning up. There is a dumpster on site. Also have a Conex, forty-foot Conex on site. It's all cleaned up. Looks like their, their next step would be starting to tear off the, the add-ons to the original structure. Have they gotten any permits yet, Tom?
No, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Sprouse. And council members, just to follow up, everything that's been said has been accurate. The architect that was here, I believe it was two meetings ago, Mr. Jamison, has been formally engaged. He has generated some preliminary drawings showing what will be the demolition of some of the add-ons that took place to get the structure back to the original. I have, I should have brought more copies, I did not, but I have some that I can pass around that they're very initial and preliminary, but it just shows the process is ongoing. The next step is identifying a contractor, excuse me, who can undertake the project and begin the demolition. They just, they have started the process of identifying a few. They haven't selected one yet. I think once they get the contractor selected, at least a demolition permit will be applied for and sought at that point. But the project is going forward.
Could we ask what the timeframe is for that contractor, within the next thirty days, sixty days?
I, I mean, that is the next step, and I-
I know it's the next step.
They're, they're actively trying to identify the right one to do and who has the experience to do it. They're anxious to do it. I, I don't know if it will be thirty days or sixty days, other than I know that is the next step that they are working towards, so.
I would think they'd be able to identify a contractor within thirty days, and I think that would, that would increase our comfort level. If in fact, that were the, the case, I think, because it has gone on for substantial period of time, I think that's a reasonable period to ask them to, to select a contractor and-
And, and if that's the council's wishes, I understand, and certainly that's reasonable. The only concern I have at this point is I don't know what exactly the, what potential contractors are gonna need in terms of drawings in order to submit bids and allow a reasoned decision to be made, so.
All they need is a check and a record ball, and they're ready.
Well, I, I understand that, but-
No, but certainly you can identify a contractor within thirty days because it doesn't take that long to interview and find out who has the expertise, and I'm sure Tom can point to some of the-
And he has.
Contractors that he's dealt with. That would certainly be a benefit to them because what they need right now is a demolition contractor versus the restoration contractor they'll need to engage later.
I, I understand, and they have identified two. Mr. Jamison has pointed out two, provided the names, it's Jess Eoff, and that there was another name of Bobby Barely, was someone else who has experience in these sort of historic renovations, so. I certainly understand-
Demolition or restoration?
That is demolition. And now, whether it turns out to be the same doing both, I'm not sure. They're, they're anxious to identify the demolition aspect of it as well, at a minimum, to get that, to get that going, so.
Larry, if I could, you know, some of the confusion I think the council might have with this is, you know, with the main house, is that's where eighty percent of your restoration is gonna take care of, so you're gonna have the demolition and restoration. How about like the two houses in the back? That's something that would make them feel a lot better if, within thirty days, those houses that already have like the tree that was falling on it, and they've already said that they understood they needed to go, that would go a long way, I think, to make them happy that something's happening, is that would be demoed. Because I did split this up into three different parcels, like the garage, the two houses in the back, and the main house, so that I can work with you a little bit, so.
Again, I, we're, we're here at the, at the council's mercy, so we will, we'll take direction. My only, my only fear without Mr. Jamison here is, is I just want to be sure there's adequate time to get somebody who is not only qualified, but is reasonably priced, and, 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 so I just, you know, if it's thirty days or forty-five days.
Well, I, I think as Tom mentioned, it, you know, it shouldn't take that long to, and to make him feel much better and the council much more comfortable if some action were taken on those other outlaying structures, and as long as they were in the process of being demolished, I think the council wouldn't have a problem with going along because this is a, we understand this is a historic site, and it's in everyone's interest to try to preserve it if at all possible, but we just need some action, and they're moving along in that direction.
I, I understand, and I appreciate that, and I think they do as well, and I hope you can appreciate, there has been some actions with these, these drawings that have been generated as well, so. If that's the wishes, then yes, that's, that's what we will, we will seek to accomplish.
Yeah.
So in thirty days, we could expect you to return, or your clients to return with a contractor, a signed contract, or the demolition part, and the, what'd you call them, the outlined buildings, the buildings behind?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know the terminology. I know what we're talking about. I don't know what they're called.
Some, some actions on the outbuildings that are associated with this property. I think we'd feel comfortable if we could see some action within thirty days. So I'd, I'd put forward the motion to, to table this until four twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table, and basically for thirty days.
Yeah, and then I think if we get to that point, we can stretch it out.
Second meeting in April.
We don't have it coming back over thirty days, because I know we are all getting more and more.
Well, and my concern, and has been all along, not only to preserve their property, but there are neighbors' properties that have been impacted by no action for years.
Right.
So they have to be respected also.
Okay. Any other comments?
That's a motion.
We had a motion and a second.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we did.
Give it two seconds?
About four, four of you.
Four comments ago. Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Tabled to four twenty-four.
Thank you. Item eleven is street and CIP reports and recommendations. Rick could not be here tonight. Let me, let me start off. Who took that at the meeting?
I think Rick did.
Yeah, Rick was here. We have, this is, this is an ordinance, or I'm sorry, a resolution appropriating CIP funds for LED lighting at the Springdale Municipal Airport. This started with a request from the airport commission. There's a match involved, I think with AEP or SWEPCO, and a payback over, over a number of years. We have, and a representative is here from, from the company that provided the pricing or the bid. After a discussion at the committee last Monday night, I asked Wyman to go ahead and, and reach out to some other companies that have done this kind of work with us before, just so we could have some comparisons. I kind of got the sense that, that was kind of a direction y'all were wanting to go. So, we're doing that, but we don't have those numbers yet. Certainly, the representative is here. If you have any questions for him, I don't want to shut him out at all.
Well, Mayor, as I recall, the motion that was presented to the, there was only four of us there that night.
And it had no recommendation.
No recommendation, so basically, we just wanted to forward this on for further discussion.
So, I guess my, my question, maybe my suggestion, would be, would be the possibility of tabling this until we get...
Next meet?
Till we get, yeah, to the next meeting, or we could even discuss it at committee next Monday night.
I move.
Second.
Let's table it and then address it at the committee meeting next Monday night.
Okay. And I'm sorry, this kind of, we, we didn't, we thought we might have that comparison, but we don't yet. And certainly, if, if we're going to table this, we probably don't need to discuss it any further.
Open it up.
But, but thank you for being here tonight, and we will, we'll try and stay in touch with you a little better, let you know, okay? But, but you might, you might want to plan on Monday night if we get, if this motion passes, all right?
Make a motion to table.
Okay.
I think we already did.
Already did. If that side would pay attention, you'd be in the game.
Well, even the city attorney thought we hadn't done it.
But the attorney doesn't think very often, so we don't have to worry about that.
And we got a second?
Mike seconded.
All right, good deal. All right, let's vote then.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Tabled April tenth and be on committee agenda April second.
Right. Thank you. Item twelve, Parks and Rec Committee Reports and Recommendations. Chairman Mike Lawson. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. We had one item before us last week at committee. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services contract for the design of the Shaw Family Park. It was recommended for approval.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Anyone else need to talk to this? All right, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carries six-zero.
All right. I'm going to turn item thirteen over to our city attorney.
This is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to file a lien for the raising and removal of a structure within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located at five-oh-three E-Wall. If you recall, the city council passed an ordinance back in January, ordering the raise and removal of structures at five-oh-three E-Wall, and this is for the cost of the raising and removal, nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
I was contacted by someone...
I'm sorry, ordinance, yeah.
I was contacted by someone about this property, and so I don't know if they're here or not, but...
Is anyone here to speak to this property?
I told them they could come tonight if they wanted to address the amount, mate.
Okay, seeing none, we'll vote.
Reed? Oh, sorry, Joe, you vote.
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Has the emergency clause, because we have that deadline filed.
Move the emergency clause pass.
Second.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries six-zero.
Okay. Item fourteen, we have a resolution approving appointments to the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority, and I'm going to get there, sorry. Miguel Lopez, currently serving. His term expired June twenty-ninth, and we'd like to reappoint him to another term.
Resolution pass.
Second.
All right.
Ask why it's so long overdue?
I'll let Wyman, Wyman, you have an answer for that?
We've had a change in director, and there was an intermittent period there for her to get her feet on the ground and get everything caught up. So, that took a while to, for them to get the, the board to approve it, get it back on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, this comes as a recommendation from the, from the board.
From the public, through the housing authority.
From the Housing Authority Board, okay. All right. Anyone else need to speak to this? Okay, Denise?
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Carries six-zero.
All right, good. Item fifteen, comments from department heads. Here comes Melissa.
Hello, I just want to remind everybody that on April fifth, in the city council chambers, from five to seven P.M., we will have a public hearing to discuss potential street projects related to the bond. Public comment will open this Thursday, March twenty-ninth. It'll be open for three weeks until April nineteenth, and people will be able to submit comments on our website. They can also pick up hard, hard, printed copies of the form from the mayor's office. They can also download it from the website. They can always call or email and request to have it sent to them as well. And I just want to update and let everybody know that we have not set a date for the animal shelter yet. We're still looking at other possible locations for it, so at this time, we have not set a date for that public meeting, and we have not set a date yet for Tyson Park improvements either. So, the only date that we have set is for the street on April fifth.
And what time is?
It's five to seven P.M. in the city council chambers.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Good deal.
The night of the arbit, of the natural too.
It is. We're, some of us are going to have to kind of go back and forth a little bit, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, I want to talk to you about Maple, the extension of Maple, and one possible project, right?
Yes.
The eastwardly extension of Maple Avenue?
Right.
Okay, to cross the railroad.
Right.
And so, there will be some discussion of that, I guess, at that meeting on April the fifth, or possible discussion.
There, there could be. We've already engaged, y'all have already approved a design firm to start design on that.
For the tracks, though, for crossing the track?
No, for the design of the street. But there will be, obviously, there will be a public meeting on that street.
So, how, how will we know when, where that extension is going to go? I drove over there the other day, and there was some comment about Maple Avenue going all the way to the park, but I don't believe it does. And how will we know, and when will we know?
It'll be just like any other road design project. You'll have, they'll get to a certain point, and you'll have a public meeting, and we'll, we'll discuss.
So, we won't know on April fifth where the proposed...
We won't know the alignment. We won't know alignment of any of these hardly, except just a line on a map, as, I mean, until, except the ones that are designed, yeah.
So, and so we would pick the project, and then they'd come up with the alignment?
Correct.
They designed the alignment.
Well, no, I think what we're, what we're having the public meeting for is to...
Prioritize projects.
Prioritize projects.
Prioritize projects.
Yeah. But there will be, for each project, whatever, whatever we end up doing, there will be public meetings, just like we do on all our, on all our road projects, okay?
And that would be, the public meeting would be after we basically have some idea of what the alignment would be?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fair, yeah. Okay. City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
I've got one thing, just as a matter of information. We did, Wyman and I were involved in a call with our underwriters for the bond issue last week. Call went very well, and, and we did get our bond rating. We're in, we're A-plus stable, which is what we sort of expected, but, but, but hoped for, and just wanted you to know that, and that next council meeting, Wyman, next council meeting, we will have, we will ask you to approve the, the sale of the bonds.
What interest, they say, yet?
Uh, no, do we have an interest rate, Wyman? They will be here that night to discuss it.
Hope it's not Shep.
I don't know if Shep will be here.
We'll be doing the pricing probably next week.
Okay, so we'll know more after next week, okay. All right, but we'll, I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up that in a couple of weeks, we'll be, we'll be ready to go.
Cost is one percent more just for Shep to show up, covers the travel expenses.
Yeah, yeah. All right, that's all I have. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We do?
Second.
And a second, we're adjourned, thank you.